Testing 123. This will be the September 16th, 2015 City Council meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, September 16th, 2015, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilman Osmer for a moment of silence and a pledge.
Please join me in a moment of silence, please. The pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my people, and the invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll step down to the floor to make a presentation of two proclamations. This is a great young lady I know has made her parents very proud and made the city extremely proud, and we appreciate everything she's done. I'd like to read this proclamation from the city to you. Whereas, Kara Kachura is responsible for caring young ladies who is a role model for all dedicated citizens to work to improve the lives of others. She is a student at Satellite High School with a 3.94 GPA and a member of the Satellite High School National Honor Society, Beta Club and Students' Government. And as a member of the Satellite Beach Police Athletic League, Kara has served on the Board of Directors for two years. She has also served on the PAL Region 3 Youth Advisory Council for two years. And so she carries outstanding accomplishments as a role model, including being a member of a Florida PAL Youth Conference Committee for three years, being named conference co-chair this year, representing Satellite Beach PAL at the State PAL Conference in Orlando. And Kara can be described as someone who consistently goes above and beyond what is expected, amazing over 800 hours of volunteer for PAL, candlelighters of Bavar, Nod on My Watch Teen Safe Driving Program, Bavar County Hunger Project, and Kids Without Christmas. And Kara has earned statewide recognition as an extraordinary teenager taking in initiatives to make our community a better place in which to live, and constantly leading by example. Kara takes the initiative to get things done and will pull all the resources to get the job complete. Give her a task and you'll never have to look back. You know it has been completed, usually far beyond the expectation. Now therefore, we, the City Council of Satellite Beach, do hereby recognize and commend you, Kara Kachura, as the Police Athletic League Woman of the Year 2015. Thank you for your dedication, work ethic, and willingness to help anyone in need. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Amazing. Chief, if I may, you want to?
Mayor, Kara.
Chief?
Yes, you have something.
Yes, thank you.
I have just a little something for you from the Police Department, but I want to take this opportunity to just say one extra thing that you made or didn't include in the proclamation. See, I've known Kara since she was a little kid. As it turns out, her and my daughter have basically grown up together and have been together and then best friends or at least extremely good friends ever since they could walk. So I've had the benefit of literally watching her grow up. So I've got a little bit different perspective on top of the things that she's done out in the community and with PAL. I've also seen her out at sleepovers and I've seen her interacting with other people and I've seen her when they're running around the house talking. And not only is she outstanding in community, but she is just an outstanding kid. She's just a good person. She's a young woman who has done great things and will do great things, but she's just a good person. She's got a great family who not only teach her right and wrong, give her the things that she needs, love and all those things, but they hold her accountable. And that is what has helped her become who she is. And they're outstanding people and what they've done is nothing short of amazing. And I just want to say that from a different perspective, all of the things that she's being recognized for, there's even a lot more that make her even more special. So I have something that I'd just like to give you. It says, Kara Kachura, 2015 State of the Board of PAL year in recognition of your outstanding achievements from everybody at the Police Department with our badge.
Kara.
Sure. Kara?
Sorry, I couldn't talk.
I did.
With hair in the back? It takes one to know one.
Thank you very much. I'll say one thing about PAL. I remember when it first started and I remember when PAL first started, and it's an amazing program. So Monday night, we're at the Florida League of Cities, and I'm standing there and I feel these two arms wrap around me. And I looked around that I thought I would see someone of normal size. And I looked up and about six foot five later is this young kid that was on my Little League team who grew up here, Nick Abraham and his brothers, who started out in PAL from a single family mom who raised four boys in town. So PAL's a fabulous thing. It's done great for our city. And thank you, PAL, for everything you put into it. Thank you very much. Okay. Please come up. Welcome, Julie. Julie is with EDC. She lives in our town now. Unfortunately, she lives next to the guy that has some smart comments there. This is an official proclamation concerning manufacturing month in Bavar. And if you ever have the opportunity to look and see what's manufactured in Bavar County, you would be stunned. There is just incredible amount of businesses around here, Melbourne, Titusville, but I think you would be very surprised what we have here. So this is an official proclamation of the City of Satellite Beach. Whereas, Made in Bavar is a joint program of the Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast, EDC, Cocoa Beach Regional Chamber of Commerce, Melbourne Regional Chamber of East Central Florida, the Greater Pond Bay Chamber of Commerce and Titusville Area Chamber of Commerce. And Made in Bavar is focused on promoting and celebrating companies that manufacture products in Bavar County, Florida, and changing the perception of manufacturing careers throughout the EDC Talent Assess Pipeline, which has initials of TAP, T-A-P, for manufacturing programs. And Made in Bavar and TAP for manufacturing programs to seek educated manufacturers raise awareness about manufacturing careers, enabling platforms for certified skill development and enhancing manufacturing job placements. And manufacturing is the economic driver of strong communities. With over 500 manufacturers in Bavar County, Florida, it is only natural to raise awareness for this fundamental industry. Whereas, Manufacturing Day is a national grassroots movement occurring on the first Friday of October annually, and the state of Florida recognizes the month of October as Manufacturing Month as an effective way to expand knowledge about the value manufacturing brings to Florida's economy and to showcase the high skill, high pay manufacturing jobs needed by the industry. And during Manufacturers' Day, Manufacturer Month, U.S. manufacturers open their doors to showcase modern manufacturing and fostering interest in manufacturing careers. And whereas, Made in Bavar through the EDC Industrial Council and the TAP for Manufacturing Program is encouraging Satellite Beach manufacturer organizations and schools to participate in Manufacturers', excuse me, Manufacturing Day. Now therefore, I, Frank Catina, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, Bavar County, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 2015 as Manufacturers' Month in Bavar. So Julie, thank you very much. If you haven't, the EDC is very interesting, I've learned going to it, with all the jobs that are coming here and how the schools are starting to participate in training kids for these skilled jobs that are going to be available to them here. Pretty interesting.
I just want to say thank you, and he's right. So a lot of the companies that we work with are manufacturers, and there's really a big need right now to get kids like yourself to get interested in manufacturing careers because it used to not be that interesting of a job, but now it's become more high-tech and you really have a career path to make really good money in those fields. So we're really trying to promote that. And if you're interested or if there's anybody else interested in Satellite Beach touring the manufacturer in the area, just have to be at Satellite Beach anywhere. We have plenty of them. Just let me know and I'd be happy to set that up.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 4 is Citizens' Comments. This is for non-agenda item, and the floor is open. Non-agenda items.
Gabe Bryant, citizen. Haven't been here for a while.
Gabe, turn that microphone to you like this, please.
Hit a couple of bumps in a row, so didn't get to come for a while. One of the things, first thing I want to address is the Beachcaster. What a phenomenal job. What a great job. We finally let our citizens know what each department does and the extraordinary job they do. And I'm going to keep reminding you for years to come, I hope, that extraordinary performances deserve extraordinary rewards. I must mention Melanie Drake from the Fire Department. What a phenomenal individual. My wife wants to adopt her. She does a great job as our EMT. At any rate, that's one of the things I want to discuss. Another one is that the outpouring of compassion from city hall, from many of my friends is definitely appreciated, especially from the busy schedule. One of the things I noticed, and I don't know how we can accomplish this, is how can the citizens thank you all for volunteering? I know you draw such exorbitant salaries, but anyway, I don't know how to go about that, but I want to thank you all for all the volunteers. And a lot of you have been up there for years and years and years, and we thank you. And Steve, I hope you'll be up there for years and years and years. I know everybody's in a hurry to rush back home and watch the debates. Good luck. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gabe, and thank you for all you've done for us in the city for all the years. The floor is still open for Citizens' Comments on non-agenda items. Hearing none back to council. City Council comments?
Hearing none. Again, I just want to echo Gabe's comments on the Beachcaster. Nice job. And Laurie, nice job. Thank you for everything. It was really very well done, as usual, very well done. Thank you.
I would just like to say to Gabe, the reason you've had such an outpouring of friendship and support is because you've earned it.
Great show. Thank you. The only thing I wanted to say is Monday night was the Space Coast League of Cities meeting, and several of us were there, in fact, all of us were there. And it was probably the best meeting we've had all year long, as far as the speakers and as far as the things that were discussed. So, Maran, thank you so much for putting all that together. I know as treasurer of the league, you know, it was a great benefit to me because all the stuff that I got after the meeting was over was done the right way, and that's not always the case. So thank you for your help and thanks for putting it all together, and Jennifer also for being there.
Thank you, Maran. Thank you very much on the Beachcaster. Again, great. And I'll tell you, this Beachcaster, to me, not only was it easy to read, but the layout of it and the color of it was so consistent and really a fresh look, I think, for the Beachcaster. So, Maran and the staff, thank you. That was great. Any further council comments? Hearing none. City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have actually several events in the city I wanted to make sure everyone knew about that we do have on September 19th, the Ocean Conservancy and Keeper of Our Beautiful will hold their Florida Coastal Cleanup Event at Pelican Beach Park from 8:00 to noon. And as usual, they'll provide the trash and the bags and all that, so you just have to show up and bring your water and help out. On September 26th is the 13th Annual Superbunko. It's adults only. So, but it is sponsored by the PAL and it will benefit their youth program. So if you're interested in that, you can get tickets from the Rec Department or just show up at the door at 6:00, and you will also get dinner. And if you go to the door, it's $5 more. So it's either $20 or $25 at the door. On September 26th, there's an event called Help Restore the Indian River Lagoon, and that is from 10:00 to 1:00, and it's a free two-part program to help restore the Indian River Lagoon, and it's at the DRS Center. Basically, the Bavar Zoo staff and the Marine Resources Council will present programs for education and basically hands-on opportunities with the oyster mat making and things like that. So that's a fun program, and if you're interested in that, you can also call our Rec Department for that information. And then also on October 3rd, the Long Daggers Kids Marathon and Half Marathon will be held, and this is for children. And this is for kids 12 years and under. Parents can run with their children. And the marathon is 2.62 miles, and then the half marathon is 1.31 miles. So it's, you know, for kids. I will be there with my daughter, and I'm trying to get the mayor to go, since he's my other child, basically, to get him to participate in that with us. And I would ask Councilman Osmer to go, and I call him Councilman Osmer because nobody can say Steve or Dave with a straight face anymore. But, so we're going to ask him to go too, since he's also becoming my other second child.
Boom.
The, I did want to point out some things in my report with thank you notes. We got a wonderful thank you note from a family that was able to use the beach wheelchair that was donated to the city, to the Fire Department, by the Lions Club. And that beach wheelchair, if you read the letter, really made an impact on the lives of that family, and I think that it's a great, it was a great thing for the Lions Club to do, and we do get use out of it, and it's a good thing to point out. And there's also a flyer in my report from the Friends of the Library. And the Friends of the Satellite Beach Library had, during the summer reading program, 765 children participated in book books. They read for 7,776 hours this summer. 38 teens participated in the reading challenge and weekly events, and 50 teens volunteered 682 hours this summer at the library. And I just think that's phenomenal. I mean, those are huge numbers for our tiny little city. So congratulations to them for a great project. I did want to let you know that the Space Coast TPO is creating a pathways project, which is basically going to be an interactive website, kind of like a guide, really, an electronic guide for all of our sidewalks, walkways, bike paths, things like that throughout the county. So they are starting the partner meetings and workshops with the community to create that project, and that information is in my report. We do have Florida League of Cities Legislative Conference this year, and this is an action item, I'm sorry. It is from November 19th to the 20th, and I needed to get council's permission to go ahead and start signing you all up for that and get you on board to go to attend that conference.
Okay. I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to make whatever arrangements for any councilman who wish to attend or councilwoman who wish to attend.
A motion by Vice Mayor, excuse me, Montanaro. Second by Councilman Brymer. At this time, because it's an action item, action items will be open for public comment, so the podium's open for public comment on this item. Hearing none back to council. Council, if you would, get with Courtney and Delph, if you can attend.
Since there's a motion, a second or consensus?
Consensus, I think. Go ahead, Scott. Yep, go ahead.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any further comments or anything for the city manager? Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, FY 2015-2016 Budget. At this time, I'll open a public hearing on the proposed FY 2015-2016 budget. Jim?
No, first A is...
Oh, this is the first one. Okay. Oh, we have had no changes between the first and second reading, so except for the look at the budget, the format of it, all of the content is exactly the same as you saw at the first reading. We are reducing the city's millage rate from 8.3206 to 8.2900. Total revenue and expenditures for this year's budget is $16,778,378.
Thank you. Comments from council? Hearing none, I will open up for public comment on the, for the public hearing for the proposed FY 2015-16 budget. Hearing none back to council. I'd like to say one thing to Andy and you and your staff. Thank you on the work you guys done on the health care. We had a meeting, Courtney and I, with Cocoa Beach Mayor and City Manager, and when we told them we were going partly insured, they were stunned. They said, "Man, that's great." Everybody I have talked to on this in the medical field has said this is absolutely the best way to go. It's going to cost us no more to go this way, and we have the potential of bringing back money that's unused in it. And I think if you think about it from a business standpoint, most of the insurance companies, that's all they're doing. They have the formula. We're just taking the risk to make the money, and we can't spend more than we did, than they proposed to us. So that's the worst we can make out in the deal. So I think it's a good way to start hedging health care. And to the staff and Andy, thanks. Really helped in that in the last couple of years here. Any further discussion on part A? Hearing none. Move on to Part B, Ordinance Number 1109.
Ordinance Number 1109, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Bavar County, Florida, adopting the final levying of adware and taxes by establishing an operating millage rate of 8.29 mils for fiscal year 2015-2016, providing an effective date. This is a second reading of Ordinance Number 1109.
Motion to approve, Ordinance Number 1109 on second reading. Thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Vice Mayor Montanaro. Further discussion from council? Hearing none. At this time, I'll open for public comment on Part B. Hearing none back to council. Any further discussion?
Councilman Dodd?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to 7C, Ordinance Number 1110.
Ordinance Number 1110, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Bavar County, Florida, adopting FY 2015-2016 budget, providing an effective date. This is a second reading of Ordinance Number 1110.
Motion to approve, 1110 on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Osmer, to adopt Ordinance Number 1110 on second reading. I'll open up for public comment on Portion C. Hearing none back to council. Any council comments on Ordinance 1110?
I just want to echo your comments to Andy and Jennifer and Courtney and all the department heads. This, you know, this process that you have put in place that's now going on, you know, its third year, has really, you know, defined how we do our budgets now. I mean, they were never as easy to look at, they were never as easy to understand, and, you know, the process now is so smooth in going through these, and I appreciate you making it easier for us, and you're also making it easier for the residents of our city to be able to understand it. So, you know, it's a great thing, and as Frank said on the health care, that was one of our initiatives when we all pretty much came back on council, was to address health care issues, and here we are. We finally made it. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Hearing none. Maran?
Councilman Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes, motion passes. Staff, thank you very much for all the work this year. At this time, I'll close a public hearing and move on to Agenda Item 8, Discuss Take Action on Ordinance Number 1111. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1111, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Bavar County, Florida, amending the Satellite Beach Personnel Policy Section 12.01, Job Classification Levels to Add Job Classification Deputy Recreation Directory, Director, and Salary Range to Add Job Classification for Comptroller and Salary Range and Providing an Effective Date. This is a first reading of Ordinance Number 1111.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Move to adopt, Ordinance 1111 on first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Dodd, second by Councilman Brymer. Questions from council? Start. Hearing none. Open up discussion on Agenda Item 8, Ordinance 1111. Hearing none back to council. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to make sure the residents knew that the comptroller position is here already. Jennifer, raise your hand. She's right there. This is a cleanup, so we're not adding a position to the budget or anything like that. And the position of the Deputy Recreation Director is actually, Cassie will be filling our position. Cassie, raise your hand. And what we're trying to do is train her to follow Carrie Stom's footsteps because she's threatening to retire in May of 2016, and so we need to make sure that, you know, we have a good, smooth transition there. So once that happens, there will not be another Deputy Recreation Director. It's only for that temporary part, so we're not adding another position to the budget. So I just wanted to make sure the residents knew that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Maran?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Dodd?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, Discuss Take Action on Ad-Hoc Green Committee Sustainability Action Plan. Courtney?
Thank you. I have two of my esteemed committee members here tonight, our Chair, Jeff Chastain, raise your hand. We've got a lot of hand raising tonight, and David Vigilati. Did I got that? And I'm going to present this, but they are the ones that did all the work. Basically, we just kind of wrote up their ideas, or the interns did, actually. But basically, they're in their short, is John Fergus here too? Dr. Fergus is back there too, I'm sorry. He's our vice chair. But they've done a lot of work. They're probably the hardest working board I've ever seen. And they've met quite frequently in the last three months to come up with this action plan. And they're, you know, as we started this process, we were concerned that we might not have the momentum and the participation, so we wanted to make it an ad hoc committee to see how it went. It went pretty famously. We have a full board. We have even an interested member or person who wants to be a member, but since he's not a registered voter, can't actually vote, but he's still willing to sit on the dais and be a liaison. That's how...
So, once that happens, there will not be another deputy recreation director. It's only for that temporary part, so we're not adding another position to the budget. So, I just wanted to make sure the residents knew that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Lenar?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman McGod?
Yes.
Mayor Fattino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, Discuss Take Action on Ad-Hoc Green Committee Sustainability Action Plan. Courtney?
Thank you. I have two of my esteemed committee members here tonight, our chair, Jeff Chastain, reach your hand. We've got a lot of hand raising tonight, and David Vigilati, did I got that? And I'm going to present this, but they are the ones that did all the work. Basically, we just kind of wrote up their ideas, or our interns did, actually. But basically, they're, in their short, is John Fergus here too? Dr. Fergus is back there too, I'm sorry. He's our vice chair. But they've done a lot of work. They're probably the hardest working board I've ever seen. And they've met quite frequently in the last three months to come up with this action plan. And they're, you know, as we started this process, we were concerned that we might not have the momentum and the participation, so we wanted to make it an ad hoc committee to see how it went. It went pretty famously. We have a full board, we have even an interested member or person who wants to be a member, but since he's not a registered voter, can't actually vote, but he's still willing to sit on the dais and be a liaison. That's how interested he is in the committee. So, we have a real good momentum going, and we'd like to, the first thing we'd like to do is create a permanent board. So, the committee met to discuss that. Since all of our boards in the city, our volunteer boards are called boards, they have recommended to change the name to Sustainability Board, which I think is a good encompassing name that kind of really describes their goals. And when you look through their action plan, their actions are centered out creating a long-term sustainability plan, so really delving into doing an assessment, looking at where we are at in terms of energy use, transportation, all of the things that would encompass sustainability, and then look at future goals. So, that's really, that planning process can really take up to a year, even two sometimes. So, they recommend doing that, and part of that recommendation would be bringing that back to you as a, with a budget, to hire some interns from FIT to do that initial assessment. And I've already been in discussions with FIT, they're very excited about that possibility, so we will bring that back to you if this is an idea that you would like to proceed. They would also like to implement some short-term initiatives that they think they can get off the ground. In short-term, I mean that they can start that now. It may be an initiative that lasts forever, and it may be, it may take a long time to get the initiative off the ground, but it's still considered something they can do that today. And they want to start out with landscaping and lawns, that's a big thing they all have. Most of our board members have a lot of experience in zero-scaping. You know, David, member of Vigilati, is pretty much an expert in edible plants and things like that. So, all of our committee members have that degree of expertise, and I think Dr. Fergus actually has a certified Florida Friendly Lawn, so they all have that experience and processes. And our chair had came up with an idea to create a, what the community of, in Delaware, they have a program called Livable Lawns, which kind of promotes the idea of a sustainable lawn care system. And then also, they also wanted to pursue the idea of Lose Your Lawns, which would be like promoting zero scape and things like that. The other item that they were looking at is creating a community garden and composting area. And that was an idea also from, that one of our community redevelopment advisory board members had too as well, so I think we have some interest in that. And then also, they wanted to really start promoting sustainability through green events, participating in existing events and bringing the green aspect to those events. And then the electrical vehicle charging stations. So, they're such a hard-working board, they already have an agenda item as your next item to talk about that. They also wanted to look at reusable, a reusable bag partnership with the Surf Rider Foundation, and I'm pretty sure you've probably heard of the Melbourne Beach Initiative, so they would like to replicate that here in our city. And we also have, we already have some interested donors who would like to participate in providing some funds towards that end. So, that's really where they'd like to start, and with your approval, they would like to become a permanent board, and then they would like to get started on doing their initiatives to you for approval.
Thank you. I've sat in on a couple of meetings, and it's great. I mean, participation's great for people, and the committees are very anxious to get things done, and I think it would be great. And it's way too much work not to be a board, so.
Move to accept the Green Committee's Sustainability Action Plan and make the Green Committee a permanent board to be named the Sustainability Board.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman McGod, second by Councilman Brymer. Further discussion? We need a liaison to the board, too?
Dylan Hanson is the, is the member, he's already put his application in, he interviewed with you all, but he was not a registered voter, so he would like to be appointed as a liaison member if that's possible.
Okay. And then council liaison?
Oh, I'm sorry, the council liaison, I'm sorry, I thought you were...
I would, I would, you want to do it?
Why, I'm on one board.
Okay. Go for it. Is anybody else only on one?
No.
What did you say?
I said she wants a council liaison. I have one board, so I didn't want to bog down other people with more than...
Who's it going to be?
Okay.
At this time, I'll open up for public comment on this agenda item. Hearing none, back to council. Any further discussion?
I just like you say, I think it's a, I like the idea, and I think one of the other aspects of making it permanent is, that way when we have citizens who have ideas or thoughts or want information or whatever, we have a central place to point them to. I mean, I'm sure there's always, other than just people on the board, that say, you know, "Hey, what about this?" Or "How can I do this?" Or, like you said, if you want to talk about a lawn or a thing like that, at least now we have a place to direct those people, say, "Hey, we actually have a group, we have a board, this is when they meet, you can go there, you can ask them your questions or throw out your ideas or whatever," which I think is good, because currently, right now, if you think about it, they're going to come to city staff or try to hit some of the other boards like Sampson Island or Beautification Board or something like that. But this would actually be nice, we'd have a central, you know, clearinghouse, for lack of a better word, to send people that direction to either pass on information or get information. And the way I look at it is because of the expertise that you guys have, there's a great knowledge base there, we could point citizens your way who want to do some of these things and say, if you go talk to them, they could set you up. So, I think it is a good idea, and because it's permanent, we have a long-term place to keep sending residents to, to get the information, to keep this going. So, I really like the idea of it being permanent.
I think at League of Cities the other night, I mentioned this to a gentleman, and he's very interested in coming to speak with you, so I'll give his name, Duane DeFries. Dr. DeFries, he's the National Escuari Program, just appointed, the executive director, and he's, when is it, FIT for a while, but he's very interested in getting with you guys, so just to throw that out there.
Mayor Feldman mentioned that they're famous now because they're in the news. The Green Committee was mentioned on News 13, and of course, the Green Committee is also guiding all of our resiliency efforts, so, you know, anytime you say climate change, it makes the news. But they, that's how it kind of, the way they couched it, even though obviously the board is much broader than just climate change. But they did get a nice positive article in coverage on News 13, so I thought that was nice. We put that through Facebook, too, and we're getting nice comments about that.
I saw that, a part in Facebook where actually what a student from Satellite High actually said, "I have some ideas, I want some information," and they were happy to hear that, which is exactly my point I was making. We now have a place to point people, which is a good thing.
I saw, I saw the Channel 13 little segment today, this afternoon it was on. You know, a lot of the things that, you know, that this committee is looking at are things that have been going on in our city for a long time, as far as the zero-scaping, because people have been doing that. You know, it's great that we're going to be able to work up the Surf Riders and Anglers for Conservation, who are the people that are putting on the Ocean Reef Beach Festival, and, you know, Mike with the Surf Riders is really interested in the bag. You know, he's the one that pushed that down in Melbourne Beach, so, you know, Mike Daniels is going to be a great asset to us on this also, so. I think this is just a wonderful opportunity, and it's something that, you know, its time is here.
And I would just like to say thank you to the new board members, and the mission that you all have undertaken is an important one, and it's very gratifying to see the enthusiasm that you all are bringing to this board, and so I appreciate it.
One more thing I just wanted to ask. Are you going to come back to us with the, how the board is going to be made up? I mean, how many members we're going to have on it? I mean, before we, I mean, we're going to approve a board, but we have to have, don't we have to have a makeup of the board?
Yes, we have to do all of that, and it has to be done by ordinance to be incorporated into the handbook.
Okay, great. So, that we can do that at the next meeting?
Yeah, we can have that all prepared by the next meeting.
Okay, great.
And then at that point, we would like also to appoint a liaison, not the council liaison, but the environmental liaison.
Sure. Councilman McGod, I'm sure you'll update the handbook.
Oh, yeah.
Any further discussion? Lenar?
You didn't ask for public comment, sir?
Sorry. Public comment is now open for Agenda Item Nine. Hearing none, back to council. Thank you. Lenar?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman McGod?
Yes.
Mayor Fattino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Moving on to Agenda Item Ten, Discuss Take Action on Electrical Vehicle Charging Station at Pelican Beach Park. Alan?
Good evening. We might have missed the, when we're going over all the events happening this week, on September nineteenth, the, there's an electric vehicle awareness day, I think that's what they call it, an electric car show. Anyway, during those discussions, as I put in the agenda item, during those discussions, it was, we talked to some of the electric vehicle drivers, and they were talking about how few charging stations there are along the beachside here, and basically, there aren't any. So, we thought, you know, where would be the most opportune place to put a charging station, and what would the cost be, and how difficult would it be to implement a charging station? And myself, John Stone, and John Fergus, who's a Green Committee member, Green Board member now, we talked to the drivers of the electric vehicles, picked their brain a little bit to find out, you know, what companies are out there that are selling these. I did a lot of research on the internet, a lot of, you know, a lot of west coast companies are out there, and not so many east coast, but we did find a couple, and we researched those, we had them come out, give us some demonstrations, show us the units, go over pricing, warranty information, durability issues. We vetted them out pretty good, I think. And so, our recommendation is to actually put one up at Pelican Beach Park, you know, the popularity of the park, and, you know, folks go there, they spend more than 10 minutes at the beach, they go up there for an hour, hour or two, and in that time, they can charge their vehicle and spend some time at the beach and go on their merry way. So, and we have the electrical out there, so it won't, it won't be that difficult to pull the necessary power out there that's needed for this, the station. Looked into the durability issue, as I said, and they have charging stations all along the beach in South Florida, Miami area, Fort Lauderdale, and they work fine, they work well, they hold up well. And the company that we are recommending is giving, basically giving us a five-year warranty for nothing. It's a special deal they have going on, they had going on August and September, and plus their service for five years is also free. So, what we're doing, what the, the cost of the electric for us up there is about eleven and a half cents per kilowatt hour. We'd be charging for these, so we recommend probably charging about fifteen, sixteen cents per kilowatt hour. The way they do it, they slide a card, it goes in to your car, and when you're done, it charges you that card, and that company will send us a check at the end of the month for however many kilowatt hours are used. So, it's a pretty simple process. I think it's a winner for the residents, I think it's a winner for the city, that, you know, Satellite Beach has always been a leader when it comes to doing new things, and I think this is one of those things that is just going to keep growing. And if we find that it's successful, maybe, you know, we think about putting one down at the Schecter Center or someplace else in the city that's convenient for, you know, folks that are going to be in a certain area at a certain, for a certain length of time. So, that would be my recommendation for the SEMA Connect Company. They were much, their unit is much less than the Nova Charge, and like I said, we're getting a five-year warranty and the service thrown in to the deal for the amount of $4,091.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Alan, the one thing I had, I think you kind of hit on it, was the durability aspect. So, these things are not, you have rusted out at the end of six months and you have to replace the whole thing, right?
Right, yeah.
I've seen down on the beach and other places, and they look like they hold up okay, but I don't know how long they've been there.
Yeah, they're, they're made of powder coated aluminum, and the aluminum does pit after a while, and that was one of my issues, concerns, but they told us that if you have any problems with them, doesn't matter what it is, you take that unit out, they'll send you a new unit, you send that one back for five years, you know, and after that, of course, then we'd have to renew our warranty, but, you know, that's, that's the thing in a nutshell.
Okay, yeah, it's all again. Question. Are we charging for this?
Yes.
I thought we weren't.
Well, if the fifteen, well, that would have been my recommendation, and City Manager, if she doesn't want to charge, Melbourne has one that they charge 15 cents a kilowatt hour for. Everybody in the, that uses these, these systems, all of the drivers, they all pay for the, for the, for the use of the electrical. So, I mean, that would be a, that would be my recommendation, but that is totally up to use.
Is this like a credit card thing?
Yes, it is.
You put a credit card in?
Yes, it is.
There would be, the company would be the collector of the funds.
The company would be the collector of the funds.
And they would be charged a percent and a half or two percent for a credit card fee?
No.
And they would pay, no, what I'm saying is, somebody's going to swipe a card, somebody's getting paid two percent or whatever the deal would be, I would think. Is that their responsibility? And then they would send us, whatever our agreement was, 20% of the profit or 90% of the profit, is that how?
The way...
Or is it us ourselves, Alan, that we're in charge of the credit card operation?
The way it works is with the SEMA Connect unit, there is, we pay a, they deferred the monthly service fee for this, this one opportunity. It's $20, I believe it was $20 a month for the service. That's been waived for the five-year period. That would have been our charge for them to handle the service. So, if we pay $20 a month, they do all of it, they scan the card, when this card is scanned, it's sent directly to them, they give you a spreadsheet of how many vehicles were there, how many, how many charges, how much electricity was used, and then they cut you a check, or the city, they cut the city a check for those, that amount of hours used. So, times 15 cents an hour. And that is a $20 fee, but that $20 a month fee has been waived, like I said, for five years.
So, there is no credit card fee, even though they're using a credit card?
No, because those credit cards are used in other places where they do collect fees, and they will eventually collect the fee from us of $20 once that, that initial period is, goes away.
Well, I think what he's saying is, they're eating the credit card fee, but eventually, that fee's going to come back to us as a $20 a month charge globally, I think, is what you're saying, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just going to be a catch-all fee of $20 at some point down the road.
All right, I just, okay.
Is this a one-vehicle spot?
Yes, one vehicle, no, we can go to two, but this particular unit, the $4,000 unit is a, is a one-unit charger. And we thought best to go with that to see how, how it worked out. You know, you don't want to get paid for a two-vehicle charger if you're not getting used out of it.
The other, the other question I had is, I have been to places where there have been electronic charging stations there in other parts of the state, and there were cars parked there that were not electric cars. How do we handle that? Because if that's something where we have to, I mean, do we have a sign there that says, "We will tow your vehicle"? Because that's a popular place, and the last thing we want is to install this there and not have someone be able to access it for the purpose intended. And then the other question is, I bring my electric car there, and I park it, and I charge... charge, and it's there all day because I'm at the beach. How do we, I mean, how do we handle something like that?
Well, the first question is that, yes, there's signage, and I spoke to the users and the, the manufacturers, and they have signs, and the users, because there are so few at this point, they basically, they're a group amongst, they know the etiquette. So, these cars now, they, they text you and let you know that they're fully charged, and they'll, people go move their cars. If they don't, then you'll get a, within the, John, there was a, a fee added on to the, to the, the bill? Go ahead, John.
Alan, would you bring your mic up in front of her mouth?
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me try to straighten out some stuff here. We had two proposals, they're both in your package. The company we did not choose to get that off the table first. Number one, it costs twice as much more for the same full deal, five years. Number two, they skimmed ten percent off the top. Okay, this company, no skimming, no nothing, okay? The other point, this is not a credit card, it's one of your little radio frequency cards that you kind of hold it near it, so it isn't like your normal credit card. But that's not the only way you pay. You can walk in with your mobile device, your tablet, your cellphone, whatever it is, and you go through the internet and do it. Or, they have an, it's through an app on your, on your device. The other way is to actually take it, like your cellphone, and call an eight-hundred number and say, "I'm at this machine, da-da-da-da-da," and they will enable it, okay? The mechanics we can set, the user can set the fee schedule any way they want. You can set it at zero. Now, Melbourne did that when they started, the one over at the Oglegall Library. They said the public was not too happy when they started to charge, okay? So, that's one reason that we kind of suggested you start with something, at least cover the electricity, my goodness. But you can do it any way you want. We've actually talked about the idea, and apparently it is done in some places, that you get charged eleven cents per kilowatt hour, or twelve, or whatever you want to charge. When the car is charged up, the car contacts the owner's mobile device and says, "I'm full." So, the owner knows to come and disconnect and move the car. Now, if you want to, and some folks apparently do this, you can make the rate structure that, let's say it gives you fifteen cents a kilowatt hour, and then it pins and the system knows that the car is charged, and it waits, you can tell it twenty minutes, thirty minutes, a courtesy period, and if that thing is not disconnected, then we can say, "Charge a dollar an hour, charge five dollars an hour." That's an incentive for the person to move the car. Now, there's not much we can do with the device itself as far as somebody with a normal car taking the slot. But you can put a sign, the ordinance could, I mean, the city could, if they want, I'm sure, pass some kind of an ordinance that says, "In accordance with ordinance so-and-so, one of our friendly police officers may come in and ticket you."
I believe there's a state law that's been passed in that, in that vein, that if you, you can ticket vehicles that are not electric vehicles parked in electric vehicle slots, much like a handicap spot.
I, I think you're right, I think I'd seen that, and what it says is, "Car has to be undercharge." It's, the slot is for car undercharge. So, it's got to be plugged in and charging to be parked there.
Right.
If it's not undercharge, it can be ticketed or towed.
Yeah. And so, okay, go ahead.
Question. This card that they would have, whether it's a credit card or whatever we're going to call that, where do you get the, do they come to the rec center?
No, 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 no.
No, they buy it through the company.
The vendor takes care of all of that detail.
So, the vendor we're getting this unit from is taking care of that?
Yeah, well, the, the EV drivers themselves, they have, and Josh, one of, one of the EV drivers showed us, he has like four or five different types of cards because there's different type charging stations. So, they get it through the, these companies, and they don't charge them for the card because they know they're going to make their money on the charge.
Kind of like having Exxon card or a mobile card or, you know, Citgo card, so they, when you're in the electric vehicle world, you know how to get and access all that.
And it hasn't been addressed, but there's three types of chargers, charging stations. There's a level one, which is no different than any hundred-and-ten outlet like sit out here right here, okay? That's not of any real use, because it'll take hours to charge battery, many hours, overnight. The level two, which is what we're getting, is the one that essentially all the different electric vehicles can use. There's a standard, you know, just like the hundred-and-ten plug is this, just like your dryer plug is a certain design, your stove plug's a different, a special design, the electric cars, it now has a standard design. There is also a level three. This is the one that the big boys use, one of the Nissans-
Tesla.
And Tesla, okay? But of course, now Tesla goes two hundred miles on a charge, and so, that really sucks the power. But one of those level threes costs fifteen, sixteen, twenty thousand dollars. And the other problem is, they're not backward compatible. In other words, I pull up in my little Nissan Leaf, my plug doesn't fit. It's like trying to plug in, you plug in your hundred-and-ten hairdryer into your dryer outlet, electric outlet, it doesn't work. And so, like the port, that was one of the things, the port went and put in these chargers, they're level-three chargers. Okay, so it doesn't, but if I own a Tesla, I can buy a little stub cable that I can use to adapt, okay? So, the level twos, the one we want, that's what we're buying, and I just want to make sure everybody understood that, that this is the standard.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions or?
My question on the number two, what, do we have power there to make a two work?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have, he, we went down, that's one of the things we checked down there, and he, as I recall, there's enough circuits and capacity, we could put in two of these if we wanted to. Now, that was another thing with the other vendor, you could put in a dual charging station, and would only, it would run off of one of these forty amp circuits. But the problem was, when, when two people plugged in, they each got half as much power, okay? And so, that's not a good idea. This company won't sell that way. You need a forty amp circuit. And for the level three, you need a hundred amp circuit. I mean, there are houses that don't have hundred amp circuits, so.
Are these two-twenty?
Yes.
Forty amp?
Yeah.
That's two-twenty.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's the reason that they can charge it, and it's, and it's a forty amp service.
Yeah.
Which is, at two-twenty is a lot of power. Okay? But like I said, the level three, you need a hundred amps at two-twenty.
That's like somebody's house box.
Yeah.
Is there a safety trip on it, like you do on a biker bathroom?
They've got all kinds of stuff, they've got the, like in your bathroom where-
GFIs.
GFIs, they've got, they have five prongs, and it's kind of like your, your ground plug on the thing, that as soon as you start to pull it out, it disconnects one of them, and that immediately shuts all the power off, so there's no way you can get your fingers in it.
Thank you, John, appreciate it. Further questions from council before we open up for public? This time, open up for public hearing on agenda item ten. Here and then back to council.
It's a great idea, I think. It's great, and we have everything we need out there, Alan, right?
Yeah, so, we, we would have to pull some new wire because we just have, you know, the, the wire out there now for just regular plugs, but the conduit's in place, the, the boxes are in place, it wouldn't take much to, to get it all set up.
What are we going to do about the charging or not charging, excuse me, I'm sorry, the charging or not charging for that fee? Because when I spoke with Courtney, obviously, we had discussed, we wouldn't do a charge to start, and-
I, my initial thought was we weren't, but if that's, I'll defer to, to John Fergus on that one, because he's the one that's really worked on this the most and probably knows it better than I do. So, if their recommendation is to start with a charge, then, then we'll probably come up with that and, and then we'll bid it and see how that goes, and we can always change it, so, you know, but I think, I think his point is well-taken with starting with nothing and then adding it later tends to make people mad. So, if we do want to ever recoup some cost, you know, we might want to do that now. And I think before, when we were starting to look at this, I was under the impression that just physically putting in that system of charging people would, would be more, would be harder than to just putting it out for free, but it looks like this system that they picked doesn't have, you know, it has all that involved, so, so I would probably defer to, to their decision to go ahead and charge something at, at the onset.
I like just, like you said, where we just pay for itself. In other words, at least to start out as not, we're not trying to make a profit out of it, because I think what we're trying to do is, is a test case anyways. We're just trying to see, is this going to work? Does it have interest? What's the deal? From that point, I don't think we ought to lose money on it, but I don't think we ought to be out making money on it. We should just do it as it is, as a test, we'll put it out there, make sure we're covering our, whatever the electric is that we're expending for it. Obviously, if you compare it to Melbourne or somebody else, we're probably going to be cheaper from, from that point of view. And like I said, to me, that's like a, you know, that's a zero-sum cost, it doesn't really cost us anything, we're not making anything, we're not losing anything, we're trying to get interest to come use it, which is really what we're trying to do. I mean, we're not really trying to get, put this in as a money-making item. I mean, we're really trying to do this as being green, providing service, entice, you know, customers and residents, people to use it. So, I, I think at that point, and you're right, I would really not want to start out and say it's free, then all of a sudden, I show up three months later, now it costs me thirty-two dollars to do it when the last time it was free, I could see where people say, "What the heck happened?", you know? I mean, I would do my thought on it.
Thank you. Other discussion?
I, I think it's a, it's a great place for a test facility. You know, if you gave me the choice of going to the Schecter Center or the beach to go charge my car, I'd probably rather go to the beach. But it gets back to my concern, and I, I think we need to really research how, you know, we're going to handle vehicles that are parked there either too long or vehicles that are parked there that aren't electric, and how we're going to handle it, because I think we're going to see that happen. I mean, I've seen it, I was in Naples, and there was a car parked there, it wasn't even an electric vehicle, and it was parked there because there was no other parking places anywhere else, and somebody parked there. And, you know, I want to make sure that we know what we're doing, how we're going to do it, and we're able to address it to tow it away, if that's what it's going to take. Because we're, we're putting this facility there for a reason, and we're putting it in a popular place that people are going to use and go to the beach at, and I want to make sure that, you know, we have all our i's dotted and our t's crossed when we-
And it's not abused.
It's not abused, I mean, that's, it's, it's there for people to charge their car.
I have a, I have a plan going forward with several levels of it, so.
Okay.
I'm in preparation on it.
Okay, good deal. I think it's a great idea.
Any further?
The chief, the chief said that he'd come back, or he'd bring a plan, and it's in preparation, so when we get that prepared, we'll just add it to my report and just kind of give you an update of how much is charging, how we're going to enforce it, you know, stuff like that.
Sounds great.
Can I just add one thing? There is also pavement marking, so it will be marked, very similar to a handicap spot, there, it'll be, it'll be painted and marked, there's an electric vehicle marking, so that there will be no question as to whether that is an open spot or that's for electric vehicles.
It was the way it was in Naples, it was just like that.
Right. Oh, no, and, and I can, you know, I can see it, I can see it happening, you know, Pelican Park is full, and there's no parking spots available, somebody's going to park there, but, you know, Jeff and I will work it out to where that, you know, it's well-marked, it's, it's marked enough that he has, you know, probable cause going there and do what he's got to do.
The, the plan that, that I, that I was referring to is really very simple, all we're going to do is, we're going to start with the education aspect of it, if someone's parked that's not supposed to be there, we're just going to go find the person, tell them to move their car. And once people get that out, it's, it's a small community, and they realize that if we're down on the beach going, "Hey, Mr. Smith, you got about five minutes or we're towing your car," they'll, they'll get the word out. I don't think, I really don't think it's going to be a problem. I have talked to other, to other people, and there are steps we can take that we have available, should that become a problem, but in the interim, the, the plan is simply just, we keep an eye on it, and if there's people there that are not supposed to be there, we find them, tell them to move their car, and, and really, it's as simple as that. If it becomes such a problem that we need to have actual enforcement or tickets or anything like that, which I, I don't believe it will be, but if it does, then I, there's something we can do later, and we can certainly implement it. But as of right now, that's really the, the plan.
And who will determine how much we charge?
I think that's what Courtney just said, is she'll bring that to us, what the cost was, and she'll bring that back to us.
We want to, if we're going to recoup our costs, we'll come up with that and put that back, we'll, we'll give you an update in my report when we get all that finalized.
For, for the council's approval.
Councilwoman Goddard, just one, one thing, when we were doing our research into this, the fifteen cents a kilowatt hour was pretty much the average throughout the state, and seeing how we're paying eleven and a half cents, you know, we're, we're really not making, I mean, it's not like we're here for profit, as, you know, you folks were saying, all it is, is, is paying for the unit and paying for the service fee, and, and that's the only thinking that we had, so. I think Epcot might charge twenty-five cents a kilowatt hour, but that's Epcot. So, you know, but fifteen cents an, an hour is pretty much the going rate. John, Melbourne was charging fifteen cents, right?
Thirteen at the Oglegall Library, and Disney World is forty-eight cents.
Oh, forty-eight cents, sorry.
Wow.
And the volumes.
Well, I'll move that we approve the purchase of a charging station from SEMA Connect for installation at Pelican Beach Park.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Goddard, second by Vice Mayor Montanaro. Any further discussion? Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Goddard?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes, thank you, John and the Sustainability Committee now, thank you very much for your work on it. And Courtney, you'll get back with us with-
Yes.
-the rest of it. Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda item eleven, city council proposed agenda for our October seventh meeting. Again, look at it, if there's other items that you need on it or would like to have on it, please see Courtney on it. You're going to, you're going to put that resolution on there? Okay. Moving on to agenda item twelve, adoption minutes.
I'll make a motion to adopt the city council workshop meeting minutes from September second as submitted, and also for the city council regular meeting of September second as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. Any further discussion? Here and then Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Goddard?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Before we close, Courtney, to your staff and to everyone that worked hard on the budget, thank you very much. Andy, thank you, very easy to read, and appreciate the work. Any further business for council? Here and then, meeting is adjourned.
We can turn in our old budgets?
Yes.
Turn in the old ones?